We'll move on to agenda item forty-six. And the cards that we have for forty-six, although you are all able and permitted to speak, but as I asked before, if you're being repetitive, please give it to one person. We're going to allow two minutes on this. And this is bill number two oh one five dash six nine. The bill was forwarded to the full council with no referral to the recommending committee, and it's eligible for adoption today. And Mr. Jervick, I'd like you to read the bill and, well, maybe, which way do you think? Read the bill first, then we'll have the public comment?
Correct, Your Honor. With your permission, what I'd like to do is read the bill, make some initial comments myself, and then invite the public up for public comment.
Thank you very much. Please do so.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is bill number twenty fifteen dash sixty-nine. This is going to be a proposed First Amendment ordinance to update LVMC Chapter eleven point six eight pertaining to the city's pedestrian mall and to provide for related matters. Your Honor, before you today is a much anticipated revision to the pedestrian mall statute initially adopted by this council, I think as far back as nineteen ninety-five. This particular version of the pedestrian mall ordinance accomplishes a number of things, but particularly with respect to street performers, the highlights include that street performers would be limited under this ordinance to performing in performance zones, which I'll talk about in a moment, between the hours of three P.M. and one A.M. in the morning. Performers under this ordinance would have to register to qualify for access for a performance zone. Performers would be limited to two hours in a particular performance zone, and then must move to another performance zone. The use of the zones may be determined by a reservation system or lottery, and I'll discuss that later on as well. The performance zones are six feet in diameter and are identified on the street by number or alphabet, and there's a reason for that. The numbered zones are always available for performances between three P.M. and one A.M. However, the lettered zones are only available when there are not scheduled performances or sponsored concerts by the Fremont Street Experience. There will be at no point in time any less than thirty-eight performance zones, except when the stages are in use and they're reduced to twenty-five, and there'll be no less than twenty-five performance zones, and I'll discuss that. On to registration real quick. This ordinance would allow you to register in two different ways. One would be with an official government ID. That could be done online or in person on the pedestrian mall, and I'll discuss that in more detail. Or you could sign a declaration where you would have to give us your name and your date of birth and have a photograph taken. So those are two ways one could register. It will be done by the City of Las Vegas Business Licensing. It would be able to be done online, I said, or in the pedestrian mall. We are going to recommend, and it's not in this bill, that this ordinance become effective on November first. The reason we're asking that is a number of reasons. There are some significant changes, and law enforcement needs to be made aware of them. So this will enable the city attorney's office to meet with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and our own detention and enforcement and Fremont Street Security and any others responsible for enforcement to let them know what the changes are, to make sure that we have uniform and fair enforcement of the ordinance. It will also give all individuals who are currently street performers approximately a month or more to register prior to its enactment on November first. Anyone who hasn't registered by November first may still perform, providing that within seventy-two hours of their performing, they need to register, or they would not be eligible for a performance zone. I want to emphasize that the registration is free and nonrevocable, and I'll go back over that in a moment, too. The other changes in this particular ordinance are certain types of batteries would be prohibited, but we have made a change unless that battery is contained within an integral to a commercially manufactured appliance or speaker system. The reason that's there is there are certain individuals that need amplified sound, and it's an integral part of their performance, and so those batteries would not be excluded if they're contained in that type of device. And of course, organized labor often used as amplified devices if there were a labor protest, and this would not prohibit batteries for that type of use. Other expressive speech is not affected by this ordinance. So let me go back in time a little bit to nineteen ninety-five, nineteen ninety-six and the original ordinance to let you know what we've got. In nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, we attempted to regulate the pedestrian mall as if it were a non-public forum, which the city believed at that time is that by taking the former Fremont Street, converting it into a pedestrian mall, turning it over to a privately managed operating company, and making them completely responsible for the operation and maintenance of the mall with no cost to the taxpayer, that we had created an environment that was not a public forum. The federal district court in Las Vegas agreed with the city. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals disagreed. We went back for a new analysis of that same ordinance under a new legal standard called strict scrutiny. Anytime government tries to regulate speech, time, place, or manner, it must be done only time, place, and manner, and then it must be the least restrictive means necessary, and that must be demonstrated in the record. Once again, the district court in Las Vegas agreed with the City of Las Vegas. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals disagreed. The ordinance came back down. There were some rewrites. This time, a visiting judge from Hawaii heard it in federal court, and he disapproved of the ordinance, which led to another rewrite, this time with the ACOU and the city working together. That rewrite resulted in an ordinance which essentially told individuals where they couldn't be, not where they could be. What it set was distance limitations from the kiosks in the pedestrian mall. Nobody could solicit, nobody could perform, or have any other expressive activity under the First Amendment within ten feet of those kiosks. And that is allowable under federal law, because when you're conducting commercial activity, you can't have people that close to the till, so to speak, and expect any commercial activity to survive. Because courts have traditionally upheld those types of distance limitations. That was in the first ordinance, the previous ordinance to this. The second thing that was in it was a distance limitation from doorways, so people don't have to run a gauntlet before walking into a commercial business. And those have been traditionally upheld by federal courts, and that's why that was in the ordinance. Other distance separations were from fire lanes and from ATM machines, public transportation facilities, and the like. Those have all been traditionally upheld by federal courts. Finally, when it came to solicitation in general, there has always been, not just in the pedestrian mall, but citywide, a prohibition on aggressive or coercive solicitation. That's the type of solicitation where an individual says no, and the asker doesn't take no for an answer. And that has always been criminal in the city and has always been constitutional. Those types of prohibitions applied to any type of First Amendment activity, including street performers, and that ordinance has been in effect for several years. It has been reported to the city by Fremont Street Experience that there have been a number of problems with that particular ordinance, not the least of which is competition amongst buskers, street performers. And if I use the term busker, it's interchangeable with street performer, and I respect the individuals who are here today that are street performers on Fremont Street who have come to express their either opposition or desired changes they would like to see to this ordinance, and they'll have their chance in a moment when I get done explaining what we've done and why we've done it. But competition amongst performers for limited space has led to a desire to change the ordinance, individuals not knowing exactly where they can be, law enforcement officers having a hard time enforcing what's out there right now. For example, if anyone is close to a kiosk, and they get there and they're gone, and nobody can prove if they're ten feet or not, or if there's somebody within, close to a doorway or close to a stage. Having said that, there are many times when the existing ordinance did lead to voluntary corrective action, but there are many times when it does not. And as a result, there has been a request for the city to revisit this issue, and this time look at the idea of, instead of telling people where they can't be, telling people where they can be, as has been done in other cities, including most recently Venice Beach, California. The Venice, Santa Monica, San Francisco, Seattle have all looked at performance zones for street performers and have approached it in different ways. You will hear from street performers that will have a very strong opinion, I'm sure, as to whether or not those ordinances really work or not, and whether or not such an ordinance in Las Vegas would really work. But I'm just laying the foundation for what it is that we're doing here today. Those ordinances have a number of things that we don't have that I think make our ordinance less restrictive. For example, in most of those other cities, permits are required. Permits are permission to use a particular area, and permits can be revoked, and permits cost a fee. And in this particular case, we are not looking for permits, and we are not looking for fees. Registration is purely voluntary, but if you don't get one, you can't perform in a performance zone. That's how you become eligible for it, because we need to know your identity for a couple of reasons, not the least of which is how do we know that you're eligible for a particular zone or that you're entitled to reservation of a particular zone? But our reservation system is different than the permit system that's been employed in other cities. We have tried to use even less restrictive means than have been used in other cities because we don't think it's the government's right to interfere with speech and to pull permits because we don't like it. All we want to do is have some way of organizing street performers and have an ability, if there is a problem, to identify who the problem is associated with.
Councilman Anthony has a question. I don't want to interrupt you, but we--
Thanks, Brad. I want to be clear on this registration. So if I'm a street performer, I would come to City Hall, I'd show them some valid ID, and then I would get a, some kind of, something to say that I could perform on Fremont Street. Is that correct?
Essentially correct. It wouldn't be City Hall. It would be two things. One, and I've met with Ms. Duttleston, two, Fremont Street Experience, they have a large booth that is going to be placed in the pedestrian mall, so you won't even have to come down to City Hall to do this. It'll be a booth in the mall. That's one place you can do it, and you can go there in person, and it's free, and we will staff it with city staff, and there will be an opportunity right there to provide either your government ID or sign a declaration and have a photograph taken, and an ID will be issued. That ID will not have your picture on it. It will not have anything on it other than indicating that you're registered with the City of Las Vegas with a number so that we know that you are able to be in a particular zone.
So I don't know how they do it in the other places, but was there any discussion about doing a, some kind of a background check to find out people who are ex-felons, convicted felons, and exclude them?
There was discussion about it--
Because they're, I mean, they've shown that they've been convicted of a felony. I don't think they should be on Fremont Street doing this. So was there discussions about that?
No, there have been discussions about that, and I must tell you that it would be absolutely illegal for us to profile individuals based on their prior criminal history. Individuals--
Well, that's not profiling.
Well, let me use the word--
We exclude people that are convicted felons from, I mean, what if there's a sex offender?
Right.
Why wouldn't we not exclude them from being on Fremont Street when there's a bunch of kids down there?
Because it's First Amendment.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I understand. I understand, and there's been a lot of debate about that, but believe me, when it comes to sex offenders, there are abilities to exclude them from traditional public parks or to keep them from schools or to make them register and identify themselves. But with respect to expressive activity, there's almost nothing in this country that you could do by way of a crime that would prohibit you from speaking free speech, and that is just the fact we have to live with. And so individuals on Fremont Street that may be convicted of a felony or may have been a registered sex offender do not lose their constitutional right to speak. And as a result, the city cannot ask for a background check that would determine whether or not you're a felon or not, or you're a sex offender or not, or you're some other category of individual that somebody in government may not wish to have speak.
Isn't this kind of a commercial, almost to, I mean, this isn't somebody standing on a soapbox preaching the Bill of Rights. This is almost a commercial enterprise where they're exchanging performance for money. So I tell, I think we should give some serious consideration of that. You're telling me that the Supreme Court has ruled that we could not keep a convicted ex-felon from performing on Fremont Street for money? Do we have court cases that prove that, or you're just kind of surmising?
I can absolutely provide you with cases in our Ninth Circuit and federal cases that deal with this issue. What I, what we're saying here are a couple of different things. Individuals can ask for donations. We're not talking about individuals who are licensed street performers. The individuals who are here today are individuals who perform either for the joy of performance or for, hopefully, a donation in return for that performance, but they're not asking for a quid pro quo. And I think everybody in this audience will agree with me, if it were a quid pro quo, they'd require a business license, and there'd be a whole different standard here. But under the Constitution, the First Amendment is broad. It's everything from the extreme end of Thomas Paine standing in seventeen seventy-six, handing out leaflets, talking about the British, to individuals performing in costume on Fremont Street. It's all under this gigantic umbrella. And in some cases, it's commercial speech. It's what you see on a billboard. It's what you see in the newspaper. And so in this particular case, we need to acknowledge that this falls under the umbrella of the First Amendment, and this speech is protected. And any regulation this council may wish to enact, including no regulation at all, must pay heed to the Constitution as it's been interpreted by the courts, including the strict scrutiny that is going to be given, this ordinance, by the courts, to make sure that if you regulate anything, it's the least restrictive possible.
Okay, we'll, I'll, we'll talk some more.
Thank you. Please continue.
Let me, if there are no more questions, I'll continue with my presentation.
I think, please continue.
The, again, the registration, people have asked, is this going to be given to Metro? Is this something that's going to be handed out? And the answer is no. This is to be used for distribution of individuals to these performance zones, which I'm going to talk about next. It will be given to the police. If somebody comes and says, an individual dressed in a costume where we can't identify their face or them as an individual is suspected of this, we would obviously give their identity. Anybody would. And so that's been disclosed and known to everybody who's here today. Having said that, let me talk about the performance zones for a moment.
Could I ask one question, please? Who's monitoring to make sure that the order of the performance timeline, somebody has to be monitoring? Is that city employees?
Fremont Street Experience will be monitoring the rotation and the placement in the circles. The city will be responsible for registration, and we are discussing right now who's going to be responsible for the actual selection. If the selection of the performance zones is a registration or reservation process, it may well take on what Venice Beach has done, which is a lottery, in which case, nobody picks. It just goes into a computer the day in advance, and individuals are notified tomorrow, you're going to be in this space at this time, this space at this time, this space at this time.
And only during a specified time?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could, if we could go to the overhead. This map is thirteen feet long, and I am not going to attempt to display the entire map. I had a meeting. I conducted a meeting a few weeks ago where I invited all street performers to look at the map and received a number of very valuable suggestions and contributions. Again, if they're not in the ordinance, it's because this is a council choice as to what to incorporate or not. My direction is to put together a regular story scheme based on what the facts have been brought to my attention. The, the map that you have in front of you is a scale map using a program called AutoCAD. And to where my hand is, at least to my left, is Main Street, and then we work east until we get to First Street, and then if I had enough room for this entire map, it would continue all the way down to Las Vegas Boulevard. The Fremont Street Experience pedestrian mall is all of that area down to Las Vegas Boulevard, including the area in front of Neapolis. It's all of Third Street down to Ogden, and that is not necessarily represented in this map, but I'll talk about that in a moment, too. And then it's also a portion of First Street. You can see to my left where my hand is, is an area identified as a stage, and then as you get down to Third Street, there's another stage. There are three permanent stages downtown, and those are the stages that are referred to in this particular ordinance. A stage is not a bus or another temporary stage. It's just these three stages, and this becomes relevant. You can see on the map, I am pointing at a circle that has the number A or letter A in it. Another circle that I'm pointing to has the letter B in it. Another circle has the number one in it. Another circle has the number two in it. Let's talk about the alphabet circles. There are thirteen of them, and they are the circles that are within one hundred feet of the stages, the permanent stages, the three permanent stages. Right now, under the current ordinance, there's a requirement that you be two hundred feet away from a performance or a permanent stage when there's a scheduled performance. This ordinance drops that limitation down to one hundred feet. So those circles that have an A or a B or a C or a D are within a hundred feet of those stages. They are available for use as part of the thirty-eight overall performance zones when the stages are not in use. However, the stages are in use for scheduled performances scheduled by Fremont Street Experience, and when they are in use, those go away. They are not eligible for performances because they're within a hundred feet of the stage. All of the other performance zones, one, two, three, four, all the way up to twenty-five, are not within a hundred feet of a stage, and they are always available for performances. Those zones are six feet in diameter. They are forty feet apart from each other, just as they are forty feet apart in Santa Monica and other cities, or just a separation between performers. They are reserved in advance, like I say, by a lot of your other reservation system. And Councilman, I see you have a question?
I do, through the mayor, of course, to you, Mr. Jervick, with her permission. Are you going to clarify in the ordinance with Fremont Street Experience what it means on these stages? I mean, if it's, you know, a full-blown band and it's a concert and four thousand people are gathered around it, or is it a disc jockey, you know, with his iPod and there's eight people surrounding? And I think that needs to be definitive in the ordinance. Have you thought about that, or have you guys already addressed that?
We don't really thought about it. We've had some very animated discussions about that. Let me, let me express the two points of view on it, and I leave it up to the council to decide what you want to decide. The Fremont Street Experience would like to have flexibility in programming the stages, and therefore, they don't want to be limited to, is a sponsored event, one person singing, or five people singing, or a DJ with a boombox. Others, and Mr. Lichtenstein, I believe, may be here today. If he's not, I know that he will make this point, that without some kind of limitation on what a sponsored concert is, you could technically put somebody up on that stage and preempt those zones from three A or three P.M. to one A.M., just by putting somebody up there with a boombox and a dance routine. I have indicated to everybody, I don't know how to encapsulate that in an ordinance, and if you have direction for me, I'm perfectly willing to follow it, obviously, but what I have indicated to Mr. Lichtenstein and to everybody else, and I'll put it on the record, if there were any such move to put an individual on a stage just to have activity that would be designed to preempt these First Amendment expression zones, we would not, we would allow those expression zones to exist within that hundred feet if that's what was going on. And there is some room for disagreement here. I spoke with Mr. Victor, who is the director of the Fremont Street Experience, and he indicated that to many people's dismay, a disc jockey with a boombox this day is a different form of entertainment that draws a lot of people sometimes. I'll let you hear from him in the future, and I'll let you hear from Mr. Lichtenstein, and if you want to resolve it in a way other than the way we resolved it, I'm more than happy to take your direction. But we have discussed that issue, and I've indicated, and Fremont Street has indicated that there, that one, there isn't enough money in Fremont Street Experience to keep a sponsored event on that stage every night, every day of the year. That's just impractical. But, but your point is, well, taking Councilman, and if you have any direction for me at the end of this presentation or in the future, I look forward to hearing it.
Mayor, I've got, I've got to go. I've got a lot of concerns, actually. I want to go through, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, though, Mr. Jervick. Would you rather sit down with me to discuss this in private, some of these issues I'm concerned about, before you go back?
I would, and I think with all due respect to Mr. Victor and to Mr. Lichtenstein, they should probably also be invited as well, so you can hear both sides of this.
And I think today, we really want to hear from the public.
Thank you.
So, and knowing that's going to be of some considerable time, I would ask that you do that in meetings, which will become public with information if there's any attempt for resolution. Please continue.
Thank you, Your Honor. These performance zones, if this ordinance is adopted as is, would be actually marked on the surface of the pedestrian mall. Mr. Victor has indicated they're using some type of tape or adhesive substance that will identify them both by diameter and by number, and that way, an individual who's in charge of enforcement will absolutely know if you're appropriately in a zone or not in a zone. Under the current rendition of this ordinance, you're allowed to be in a zone for no more than two hours. This begins only at three P.M. in the afternoon and ends at one A.M. in the morning. The, the reason for that is those are the peak hours when the identified problems of clustering and competition and things like that occur. And so before three o'clock, after one A.M., it's the rules pretty much as is, just as long as you're ten feet away from a kiosk, and you're away from a doorway, and away from an ATM, and a fire lane, et cetera, et cetera, you're okay. But after that time, it's performance zones, and to be eligible for one, you'd have to be registered. The, again, the performance zones go all the way down to Las Vegas Boulevard. Fremont Street would be responsible for making sure that the rotation occurred at the height of the odd hour. That is, you would have a zone from three o'clock to five o'clock, from five o'clock to seven o'clock, et cetera, et cetera. If you got there late, you don't get to get an extra fifteen minutes at the end. If you leave early, you don't get to make it up somewhere else, and you can't have the same performance zone in a row. So you could be in technically Zone One, and the next two hours, you couldn't have Zone One again. You could move to any of the other twenty-five, and then later, you could move back to Zone One, but there'd be rotation and an opportunity for everybody to have, compete essentially for these spaces based on a content-neutral selective system. The, let me get my notes for a moment. Let me go to registration again for a moment. As Councilman, as I indicated, we are unable to look at people's backgrounds and things like that for registration. Again, we're not telling the public that an individual who's registered is licensed by the city or in any way approved by the city, but it is just a way of keeping track of who's who for purposes of assigning these performance zones and for, in the event of an emergency or problems with an individual who's not able to be identified, to have a way to identify them. And again, there will be no fee charged for it, and they will not be revocable for any reason. They will have, need to be renewed every hundred and eighty days. Again, they'll be free, and we'll have a booth out in the mall. The, I think that concludes this portion of my presentation. What I would like to do is thank everybody who came to the street performer meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago. I know that there's going to be a great deal of contention over this ordinance, and I know that this council's going to have a lot of testimony and things that you want to weigh. And so what I am suggesting is that we bifurcate this process, and what I would like to do is have you today hear from the street performers and all the street performers, because I think that, in all fairness, they are the most affected by this particular ordinance, and I think they deserve to have their voices heard and have you hear what their concerns are. And then what I would ask this council to do is close a public hearing and hold this item in abeyance until the September sixteenth meeting, which will give me a chance to digest new comments as well as old comments, meet with individual members of council, including the sponsors of this ordinance, Councilman Coffin and Councilman Barlow, and hear if there are any changes that you wish to make to it, and that at that point in time, return on September sixteenth. Hopefully, with this issue, either it remains the same or it changes, however you want to do with it. And at that time, I will like to appear with individuals that will talk about the safety aspects of this ordinance. I would like Fremont Street Experience, perhaps Metropolitan Police Department, maybe detention enforcement, maybe Fremont Street Security to fill in the record as to the rest of the justification behind this particular bill.
But I may go ahead this morning and take public comment, regardless of that, should that be accepted by council to ask for an abeyance to the sixteenth?
That's correct.
And therefore, I mean, today, since it was advertised and agendized, that this would be the time at the sixteenth, there would not be public comment?
Well, it'll be up to you, Your Honor. I think that you certainly have the right to hold all the public comment on this portion of it today and, and, and leave it at that, and then get the rest of the ordinance at the next meeting. I think individuals who have prepared for today deserve to have a chance to be heard.
I agree.
A lot of people have gone way out of their way to come down here today and--
Without question.
--car some time of their schedule.
I would hate for them not to have their opportunities, so today's going to be-- Please, Mr. Jervick, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mr. Jervick, before you leave, and I am in support of, is it the September sixteenth city council meeting?
Correct.
So that's two weeks from now.
Correct.
Okay, and so I am in support of your recommendation to the board for that abeyance. But what I would like for you to address as we move forward prior to the sixteenth, and we can do this offline or we can do it during the public testimony portion of the meeting, is my concern, because I've taken several trips to Fremont Street at midnight just over within the last week to look at after midnight what the, the energy of the street is like. And it's a great energy in relation to the number of tourists that are in the corridor, enjoying themselves, but what I noticed also is elements of, of characters that I personally don't care for. And so for that, I guess the term art is in the eye of the beholder. I guess the same can be said for-- I guess the same can be said for some of those individuals that are down there that consider themselves artists, okay? When I see families walking through our downtown with kids enjoying themselves, with their husbands and wives and significant others, and groups of people, and we have individuals underneath the Fremont Street Experience who are what I consider naked. A lot of the women look like they've just stepped out of a strip club, meaning a G-string with their entire behind out, very thin layer of fabric up front, and absolutely no top, and paint over the nipples. So, that concerns me, because when you speak about First Amendment rights and freedom of speech, I'm not sure if that falls within that category when you have women out basically displaying themselves in a very naked way before the public. In addition to that, we have men that are in scantily G-strings and high-heel pump boots with their entire backside out and very thin layer in front of them. And the men, by the way, look like they need to get a gym membership. Because -- I'm not, you know, I love art, but I just don't consider that to be artistic in any way. And so, I'm concerned about that, because that's what's pushing off the tourists and residents who are coming down there for a great experience, and there's so many amenities to enjoy in our downtown. I want the repeat customer. And for a lot of the emails, the hundreds of emails that I forwarded to your office, the countless calls that have come into my office over the years have been, "We enjoyed our experience, but we won't return because of the element of what we saw as far as the scantily dressed men and women that are not attractive to our family." And we have to address that. There is a time and there is a place, but I believe that far too many people are hiding behind the constitutional label of First Amendment, when in fact, some of this really has to be addressed, because we can't allow our community to be degraded in such a way to where the economy of what we're creating is spiraling downward versus up. And so I have to stand up on behalf of the businessmen and women in that corridor, if no one else will, and say, "Enough is enough. We really have to do a better job at policing this issue." And for those characters down there that are truly artistic, and I've spoken to a number of them, and they've seen me walking at night with my ball cap on and saying, "Hey, Councilman, don't think that you're incognito. We see you." And I go over and I have a conversation with them, and a lot of them are true characters that really bring that element of entertainment and value to the overall aspect of the business and the economy that's taking place underneath the experience. And so, I look forward to speaking with you further in regards to that. And lastly, speaking of freedom of speech and First Amendment, do we not have a curfew in the City of Las Vegas on Fremont Street Experience?
We do.
And what is that curfew, Brad?
10:00 during weeknights, 10:00 on weekends.
Okay. Who polices that? Because when you have a group of young people, and I have young children, when you have 10, 9, 8, 7-year-olds performing on Fremont Street after midnight, tell me, where does that fall within the Constitution? So, these are the type of things that I see with my own eyes, not something I heard, Brad, but what I experienced myself by taking the initiative of going out into my ward to see what's really taking place. And it's not something that I'm proud of. And so we have to address that, and you and I both know that we've been working on this a very long time. So I'm preaching to the choir, but we're looking to you as our legal counsel to guide us accordingly, to keep us within the parameters of not violating the Constitution, because I too believe in freedom of speech and First Amendment rights, but I truly believe that some folks are hiding and getting away and falling through the cracks of that same protection that is in place for all Americans. And so, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I just want to say thank you, Brad, and also for the introductory paragraphs to the First Amendment, because intent is very important, and the plain meaning of just language isn't always adequate, and then in fact, you need what would be the equivalent of a preface or, you know, an opinion as to what you're trying to do with what you're doing in the words. The issue has always been important to me. I grew up here, I was 9 years old when I was first on Fremont Street. So, it really always has been a family place, and but, in the right time. So, for example, I don't stay up past midnight like my colleague, he's young and vigorous, but, you know, what I'm trying to do is I get out there in late afternoon, early evening, when I know families are there, and this is a problem, because it's hard to tell a youngster how to behave and how to dress properly when, you know, they're around people that are not dressed properly for that time of day anyway, or evening. We have a curfew, children should not be out there after the curfew, and we were never allowed out there earlier, so I see no reason to change, the kids haven't changed. They have become, their senses have become deadened, though, by all of the nudity that you do see on TV, but still in person, that's a different thing. That's why we don't allow them into bars until they're 21. I think the idea of a man dressing nearly nakedly, but not quite, well, he hasn't got a chiseled body, but he's trying to make fun of himself, and he's trying to get a few tips to make that happen. I understand. But on the other hand, part of him isn't at all clothed, and about child's height, right there, when you're looking at the bare cheeks of a man who's way too fat to be in a diaper, still is kind of revolting. But, in this new venue, where you have, you expect them to be in a place, but we give them a spot that they can be, and nobody can interfere with them, as opposed to telling them where they cannot be, this is a better deal for them. Yeah, I know there are going to be problems, no matter how you amend this, there'll be people that won't like it at all, but I think it's our responsibility to do the best we can. And we all know from our high school and college work that truly, First Amendment is not actually completely unfettered, that in fact, there are limitations to commercial free speech and to political free speech. So, really, we're not taking anybody's First Amendment rights away, as I see in a flyer that was circulated around Fremont to get people to come. You know, it's like anything else, as Councilman Barlow so eloquently described it, it's a place where all people should be. And I cannot apologize to parents who bring their kids out after a certain hour. So maybe there will be a little self-policing as well amongst the artists and entertainers and beggars. I hope so, because that would help clean it up. So we'll see, and we'll take testimony now, and I know we'll hear more in a couple of weeks. Thank you. And I'll be willing to meet. I have been reluctant to meet with individuals on this, but meeting with you is important and have done, and now then we'll set up some meetings where people can come in and discuss this over a table with you present. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jerbic, and I think we're ready to move on. I do want to thank everybody that's come down today, because this is your community, your city, and I know so many of you listening to your applause. I know you are the entertainers, you are the ones that we want to make sure that have your opportunities. Keep in mind, everything's a work in progress. We have been working on this for a long time, and if we don't get our tourists coming downtown, no beds will be filled, there won't be any place to perform. So the key is, we have to be tourist-driven and our resident-driven, and I know, just listening and watching to how you've been responding to the comments, and as Mr. Jerbic has already had a public hearing on this, it is a work in progress, and perhaps with the input and as we move forward, we'll find a better way to augment it and do something different, perhaps this will work out. But it is something that we know as a city council, and having been here for so many years, so many of us, this is something that we know we have to get our arms around, and certainly for all of us who live in this wonderful country, freedom of speech and First Amendment rights is what it was founded upon. But for those of us who do the right thing and abide by the law and are entertainers, we have rights too. So, moving forward.
If I could, I'll leave the podium now, Your Honor, but I'd like to say one closing remark.
Yes.
A number of entertainers that are here today provided input to my office. Two in particular, Michael Moore and Brandon Summers, I think are both here, took the time to write me long emails detailing what they thought should be the type of regulation, if any, for Fremont Street. I provided those emails to each member of this council, so I want to thank them for taking that effort to do that. I particularly want to thank three individuals or three groups. Well, let me start with Alan Lichtenstein and his client, Adam Flowers, and other entertainers. Victor Lichtenstein, he used to be the attorney for the ACLU, he's now representing individuals who perform on Fremont Street. He attended many of our meetings, provided me with comments, we talked as late as yesterday to the extent that we could. I've incorporated his comments in there. I indicated to him that some are disagreements he has with Fremont Street, not with the city, and those things are left for them to work out. But I want to thank Alan, and I want to thank his client, Adam, for coming to these meetings and spending the time to work on it. Second, I want to thank the organized trades unions for coming forward. They believed that there was some language in this ordinance that would have prohibited or interfered with labor activity in the Fremont Street Experience. That'd be individuals' right to protest, picket, organize, leaflet, and alike. I want to thank them very much for their assistance, and Richard McCracken, the attorney for the Culinary Union, who I've known and been a friend for a very long time, who stepped in at the last minute, reviewed the ordinance, and made suggestions that we've incorporated in this draft. And finally, I would like to thank Todd Story and Amy Rose with the ACLU of Nevada. They've been at every meeting, they have been able to take a phone call on a moment's notice. We talk sometimes as much as two or three times a day to discuss little issues that we just found that popped out, and without their help, we would not be here today. So, having said that, Your Honor, I will stand and answer any questions that you have and turn it over to you.
So if you'll just have a seat then. And upfront, following this public hearing and any motions about this agendized item, Mr. Jerbic, how do you prefer to continue to hear as we move forward and once this becomes in place or some amended thereof? How do you want to hear from comments? Because I'm sure they'll want to maybe get it started, let's see how it works, but how do they contact you?
Well, what I prefer is that everybody enter the comments on the record today. Those who have already contacted me, unless there's something more, I've given my email address and my contact everyone. If anybody has any doubt, I'll make sure that it's available through Mr. Riegelman at the PIO office, but I can be reached at my name, first initial B, Jerbic, J-E-R-B-I-C, says B Jerbic, at LasVegasDavada.gov. And so I'm not real hard to find, and I'm accessible to meetings if I certainly have the time. But what I look forward to today
Thank you.
Is reading the transcript of this record, answering any questions that people have if you want me to, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And then we'll continue to the next meeting so we can make the record for the security portion of this ordinance.
And I would like that, and if you would remain here somewhere.
I will.
And just have you come back at the very end of the public hearing portion.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Also, I'm going to read the cards that I have, it does not preclude you from coming to the microphone. Again, it's going to be two minutes, unless we get a group together that can answer one and try not to just repeat what's been said. I just really feel this is a work in progress, it's your community, it's our community, and we get together and do the best that we can do if we work together and are open and listening and sharing what's good about something and what's bad. So the cards that I have, and this is the best I can do with my alphabetized, okay, where is he? Okay. I have Heather Baressi, and pardon me for messing up your names, Jared Carl, Gary Down, Jay Gelman, Justin Harrison, Marin Hauser, Denton Keener, Jerry, oh, Jerry, L-E-C-H something, but you know who you are, Julie Langill, Renee LaRue, Michael Troy Moore, Gerald Morrison, Bruce Peck, and Gregory Poindexter, Joshua Looks Like Roz, Ray Rosdale, Carlos Salazar, E.T. Snell, Scarlett Ray Watt, and Manfred Yates III, and here is Brad Priati. So, let's just, whoever wants to come first, you don't have to be in the order, and just if you would, we're going to make it very strict on two minutes. When that bell goes off, if you're breathing, you're still in the start of a sentence, you're off. So, good afternoon, good morning, whatever time it is, and we really appreciate your help in this. So, your name, please.
Michael Troy Moore, President of Sonic Laborers Union and Visual Entertainers Union. Greetings to the council, and thank you for having us. Would you like the good news or the bad news first?
We want you to use your two minutes effectively.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to do is address some of the problems with this and then give you a possible solution, and I'll do my best to get it done.
Do the solution first, because you may not make it, and we want solutions.
Okay. The solution is that with the legal problems with this from ADA violations, equal protection violations, constitutional violations, human rights violations, that if you were to enforce this ordinance as it's written, there is multi-employers in this group, Fremont Street Experience, Possible Casinos, and the City of Las Vegas. The only thing missing is a W-2 going one way and a check going the other way to the performers. So, employer-employee relationship has developed by the overstepping of the control tactics in this. That creates a problem that I don't think the city was aware of. Also, with the constitutional issues enforcing certain things of this, we'll definitely have litigation and other problems. Goldstein versus Dan Tuckett was just one back east on this same situation. What I suggest is that we, and considering that one of the representatives here agreed to a third-party car check to recognize this as the majority status union out there, as opposed to the other union, which by definition under the National Labor Relations Act is a management-controlled union with a minority. They should not be bargaining in these meetings. Now, since we have a majority, we'd be willing in good faith to bargain
Okay.
A contract that takes care of everybody's interests, give and take for everybody on this. There hasn't been input from a majority of the performers out there. And actually, the term "busker" in performer is almost derogatory. We're citizens that are exercising a First Amendment right, we're not some second-class citizen. I looked at the amendments in this ordinance, and it makes street performers a second-class citizen by definition, or "busker," which, if you look at the history of that name, means whore and murderer, going back 400 years.
That's it, I'm sorry, but thank you.
What I'm willing to bargain and sit down and we can do a contract, and ending with that.
I'm sorry, you can't, we've got to get through this. Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Jared Carl, and I'm a street performer, a balloon artist, with my girlfriend, Heather Baressi, down on Fremont Street. I've been thoroughly studying this since it was introduced, and there's some problems that I see as most likely going to have the opposite of the intended effect that we have here. As Councilman Anthony and Councilman Barlow pointed out, the majority problem that many have, like when you read the news articles about this, is the distasteful so-called performers, which not a single word in this does anything about. Like, in fact, everything in here that makes changes will specifically not affect, for instance, a half-naked man. He would be able to stand in a circle, he doesn't require amplification, he doesn't require anything else involved in the act. However, there are several things in here, for instance, the decibel levels. I also possess a Class 1 sound meter, the type that they use at Fremont, and I went down to Fremont on Tuesday the 18th and took some readings as I walked around, and the ambient sound level readings are higher than the permitted sound levels. For instance, at spot number 16 and 15, if you guys have the map available, they're directly to the sides of the third street stage. At one of them, it's 105 decibels, at the other spot, it's 112 decibels. For reference, a motorcycle or a lawnmower is about 100, and a normal conversation between people at 3 feet is about 60. So the ambient sound level at Fremont is 85. That exceeds the 75 that were permitted, and decibels are a logarithmic scale, I'm sorry to be technical, but it means that basically 3 decibels is a double in the volume. So 75 to 78 is now twice as loud. 78 to 81 is now twice as loud as that, and now 81 to 84 is twice as loud as that. And I'm competing with an ambient sound level of 85. There's no possible way that an amplified person could follow this rule. Merely talking to the pirates at their sec, by spot number 6 on your map, which is not even near a stage and not even within 100 feet, to even be heard, having a four-person conversation standing close with a meter conversation standing close with the media between us, was registering 102 decibels.
Okay. That's a very good point. We'll make sure, and then council, our council will take that into consideration as we go forward. Thank you.
I had other things. I wish I could talk further.
Sorry. Thank you.
Good morning. I think it's still morning, council. My name is Merron Hauser, Your Honor and the council members. I was, I was brought up in a middle-class home by, you know, middle-class parents as well as their neighborhood. My, my father was an educator for 35 years, and my mother is a practicing law, civil law attorney. So I felt right at home, actually, when I came into the city council office or room last month. I did come to Vegas, like I stated on the Tuesdays meeting a couple of weeks ago, about six years ago, and because Vegas is the entertainment capital of the world, I don't think a lot of people that are performers and entertainers quote-unquote "on the street" respect that, which is a bummer. But I do have a few comments and a couple of questions. I'll try to be quick. The, the blocking of the public thoroughfare by the big groups of people, individuals that may be rapping or singing or dancing or whatever it is they're doing, is definitely a safety issue and definitely an issue for Fremont's security, as well as the most important issue is the tourists. And the pornography that goes on when these half-naked people that Barlow was referring to, Councilman Barlow, excuse me, as soon as they take the public's hand and put that on their breasts, I believe that's pornography as soon as the picture is taken. And so these things, they need to be weeded out or checked out. And I get hats off to Metro Police. They've been nothing but great in the past six years doing their job, and they're kind of, I know they're in the middle of all this, which is a bummer. I do believe if they're going to have any ordinance and have any time level and have any spots in all this, should be from 7:30 to 11:30, because from 7:30 to 11:30 is when the, the public is at great numbers and is when the street performance is the same. And for those would be two shifts, I believe would be a lot more practical, 3 to 1:00 in the morning, because there's nobody there then except the indecent people that Barlow was referring to. And other than that, I believe I'm finished.
That's good.
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry, is, is, you know, if, if someone's going to be denied a registration, well, if you're not denying a registration to someone, like, like he suggested with felonies, which you can't, obviously, you know, isn't that more like an audition?
Okay.
And if everyone's going to pass the audition, what gives Fremont's security the right?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, I mean, your suggestions are being heard, and I know our city council is making note of those. So we are taking everything in. Please, next, please. Unless you're speaking for a group, and then I'd like you to say how many you're representing, who they are, and I'm going to ask them to say yes, you're representing them. Please, go ahead.
Good afternoon, lady mayor, distinguished councilman, Attorney Jerbic. My name is Scarlett Ray Watt. I'm a professional ventriloquist from England who's had an extensive career in television, appeared in New York, LA, all around the world. Let me get straight to the point. Las Vegas is a shining beacon for performers to travel to from all over the world. You've got Guy Liberte with Cirque du Soleil, multimillion-dollar shows which started on the street. And this ordinance, which is, I would think is totally farcical, and not even 21 pages of utter garbage, and you had an opportunity, Las Vegas, the shining city, to set an example. And I appeared in Third Street Promenade in Santa Monica and New Orleans and Bourbon Street. This is the worst bit of garbage that I've ever seen put together.
You have to help us.
And today...
Help us.
No. I'm here. Thank you. Thank you. I'm a performer, and you and your distinguished husband, Oscar, are more than competent at putting this right. But just let me finish on this and it's closing. In a media age, when the hot button topic is black lives matter, white lives matter, buskers' livelihoods matter, and that must be taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And most importantly, what we need, it's always easy to put something down, tear it apart, be negative, but we've got to look at this to come up with the right solution, which means it's your suggestions. If in fact, this doesn't work, we've got to find something that does work. We're families, you have your rights. Everybody has the rights. We have to do it, or it'll be challenged in the courts, but we have to come up with solutions. We can spend our entire lives complaining and dividing among ourselves. This is about pulling together and making sure we're doing the right thing the right way. So please, if you want to criticize, that's fine. You're not coming up with the solutions that we need and the suggestions we need to move this forward in a positive manner. Hi.
Hi. And we want to thank you all for doing what you can. I realize this is an issue that takes a lot of push and shove, and hopefully we hadn't come to an agreement. I do have some...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Your name, please.
Heather Baressi. I'm a street performer and balloon artist down at Fremont Street. I've been doing it for about two years. I actually got a lot of attention after my last talk with Jerbic on, in his meeting in August. I had a lot of the community actually come up to me, 20, 30, 40 people. I appreciate what you do down here. We need you down here for our kids. You know, everybody was very happy. And, you know, I was very saddened to tell them that if this goes through in the current form, that I would have to leave Fremont, and they were extremely devastated. It's the one thing their kids do when they come down there every time. I see the same kids week after, week after week. The things I have a problem with, I strongly urge you guys to, you know, you're going to take time and look at it again. I feel like I shouldn't have to jump through so many hoops 24 hours in advance to come out and perform. I have a busy life. I have a real job. I come down now to perform when I feel as if my schedule and my job allows. Because of the job responsibilities, I can't forecast when I'd need to reserve a spot 24 hours in advance, and I can't stand in a staging area for two hours and wait. You're going to lose a lot of world-class buskers. You haven't given us enough spaces. I feel there's going to be even, maybe even violence amongst these street performers when there's not enough spots. You guys say you want to help us by giving us, you know, you don't want competition. There'll be more competition now. The 40 spots, 40 feet between each spot, I feel like is not exactly how we should do it. The other place on the beach, there's sonic clarity. There's no noise. 40, 40 feet is efficient to not interfere with each other's music. At Fremont, there's, like my husband said, there's the decibel level of 85 to 112. We don't really need to be 40 feet apart. We don't need sonic clarity. There is no such thing.
Thank you.